Okay, it's nine o'clock. I'll call to order the November twenty-ninth meeting of the Celine County Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Yes, ma'am, and clear.
Now, if we could all stand for a flag salute and moment of silence.
At pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, we'll move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting. If there's anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on Celine County business.
No citizens here.
Seeing no one, I will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of approval of public forum agenda and approval of counts payable.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. We approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. Now, move into our action items. Item number one.
Bid award for 2023 aggregate and aggregate hauling with Justin Mater County engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Morning, Commissioners. So, on November fourteenth at eleven a.m., we opened bids for aggregate material and aggregate hauling. We had seven aggregate producers and six aggregate haulers that submitted bids. And so even though that we bid the material and the hauling separately, we got to kind of look at that together to get a combined cost for that material. So, in your packet, you should have a list of the bid tabs. That's got the unit prices for the material, unit prices for the hauling, and then a combined cost on that. So, alternatives for action would be to accept the unit prices for the aggregate and aggregate haul as indicated in staff recommendations. Two would be to accept the unit prices for different aggregate producers and haulers, or three, reject all bids. Staff recommends to award our SS3 material, which is our three-quarter inch crushed limestone, to Ham quarries, and they're located out of Chapman. The quarry's out of Chapman, Kansas, with TNR Construction being the hauler for a combined cost of $26.30. For SS5 material, which is our one-and-a-half-inch crushed limestone, we recommend awarding the aggregate to Ham quarries, again, out of Chapman, Kansas, with TNR Construction as a hauler for a combined cost of $25.95 per ton. These costs are on a per-ton basis. Our AB3 material, again, awarding it the aggregate to Ham quarries out of Chapman, Kansas, with TNR Construction being a hauler for a combined cost of $24.50. After discussing with the prices for SS7, which is one of our types of sand, we are recommending not to award our SS7 sand, but therefore, we would be using more of the SS8 sand. And so, the SS8 sand would be coming out of Johnson Sand here in Salina. And being right here in Salina, there's no haul cost for that because our maintenance guys will go over and pick it up from the sand pit. And then something that we did this year that we haven't done in the past is we allowed aggregate producers to submit any material that they would like to submit on. You know, that doesn't mean any specifications, but if they wanted to submit a material, we would go look at it and determine if we wanted to award that material or not. And so, we've got two materials we would like to award. The first material is from APAC, out of their Quartzsite Quarry, which is over by Lincoln, Kansas, and it's what they're calling a one-inch roadstone. And we would like to award that material for $11.65 per ton. And maintenance, if when we need this material, and it would probably be in lower quantities, but if we would need this material, our maintenance division would go and pick that material up. And then our other material is from Nightland, and this is a quarry over by Melvern, and it's what they're calling is their one-and-a-quarter-inch road rock. And they submitted a price of $33 per ton, and that includes the material and the hauling. And so, because Night Trucking, they've got their own trucking company, and so it would be delivered to our yard for $33 a ton. So, all recommendations in the table that's in the request for action represents a low bid of the combined aggregate material and hauling, except for the SS3. So, the SS3, the low combined bid for that material is actually a material out of Harshman Construction near Florence. And this material is significantly softer, you know, than the other quarries or the quarries out of from Ham Construction. And so, we, and there's only a pretty, there's only 30 cents difference in ton, per ton, and so we just feel like it's worth spending that extra 30 cents for a little bit better quality rock. And again, our SS5 material is our road rock that their road and bridge department uses as kind of our main gravel surfacing rock that we've been using for the last quite a few years. As far as for budgets, for our 2023 budget, for SS8 and SS7, we've got a budget of $200,000. For SS5 and SS3, we've got a budget of $413,875. And then for our road gravel, for our AB3 road rock is $177,375. And then for the contract hauling is $407,000. And so, for this request, we're asking that the Commissioners accept the unit prices as shown in the table or what I've just spoke. The quantities purchased throughout the year is really going to be mainly dependent on the type of year we have as far as weather. You know, if we've got a dry weather like we've had for the last couple of years, you know, we use less aggregate. But if we got one of those years where it just rains and rains and rains, you know, we're going to need more aggregate. And so, you know, so the purchasing of that material is really would be, you know, left to the discretion of Darren Fischel on the Maintenance Division for that, if everything's within the budgets that I just said. So, is there any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of them. Noticing the aggregate special from APAC's years Quartzsite Quarry, that product is a lot harder than your SS3 and SS5, isn't it?
It is. It is. And this was just so at certain times in the northwest part of the county, if we needed aggregate, the quarry is just about as close as coming back here to get rock. So, it'd be very specific to that area of the county.
Doesn't it have a longer lifespan?
It does. It does. But it has no plasticity. So, it's a good material, but it's just a very selective material. It does have a longer lifespan.
It just seems like, that seems to be a pretty good price on it. And, I mean, if it's about the same or even cheaper than the, about the same as SS products.
Right. But another thing to note is they bid that material, but there's a lot of times you can't get that material.
Right.
So, just because they bid it, that doesn't mean you can get it when you want it. It's just when they have it available, and it's kind of selective when it's available.
And what was the product that we were having the complaints on as far as cutting tires?
It was the SS5 from Grantville, and they did not bid this year. The trucking company was really overworked last year, so they did not bid that material this year.
And the other special from Nightland, that inch and a quarter road rock?
It is. It is. They call it inch and a quarter, but it's screened down to less than an inch. Inch and a quarter's the top size, and it is a little bit harder aggregate, and that's the aggregate we use in the subdivisions or in front of heavily populated homes because it is a little less dusty. So, we do try to keep dust down in those areas.
Have we used this product before?
Yes.
For this quarry?
Yes. It's what we rebuilt Wasserman Way and Frisbee Lane up there with, and Sundowner West.
How do these prices compare to last year or the year before?
Well, I knew you were going to ask that.
Oh, you did?
So, I'm prepared. So, for SS3, we're looking at a 29% increase. SS5, which is our main rock, and we buy in large quantities, it's a 27% increase from last year. Our AB3 is a 36% increase, and our sand, which is our SS8, is a 13% increase. So, pretty significant.
And did we put enough money in the budget, do you feel? Or will you have to come back later, maybe?
It all depends on the weather.
Weather.
You know, on the climate that we have this year, you know, I think the increases that we made, we didn't make 30% increases.
That's what I was, I guess that's what I was saying, so.
Right. So, it all depends on the weather that we have.
Okay.
Any other question?
I'm going to make a statement that probably is irrelevant at this time, but at some point in time, and I doubt that any of us will still be left on the commission when it gets to this point, but I would like to see us look at maybe hauling our own rock, you know, having our own trucks haul it. I know what the, right now, we can't hire the dump trucks drivers that we need to just to fill our crews, let alone start hauling all of our own material. I know there would, I'd like to see, I shouldn't say I'd like to see us do it. I'd like to see a cost comparison done at some point in time to tell us what we are or are not missing out on, you know, as far as cost savings, or if it is indeed an increased cost.
From, just from a historical perspective, we did use to haul our own aggregate. And the reason we went to contract hauling was because it wore out our trucks. They didn't get replaced on a regular basis. There weren't enough truck drivers, as you mentioned, and price fuel just went crazy.
Well, we're paying for all those things, one way or another.
Yes.
That's for sure.
But we could certainly do a cost comparison.
And that's, and I'm not asking for that right now because it'd be a waste of your time to do it right now because we can't put all those variables together.
If, because of the one major difference that increases our cost, which would require significant investment in equipment, is trucks, you cannot effectively haul or efficiently haul 15-ton of rock that far. You would need to purchase end-dump trailers and trucks.
And all the people that I see hauling that are using, you can tell, remanufactured, reused vehicles to do that that are significantly cheaper in cost and probably do have maintenance issues.
Yeah. And a lot of haulers, you know, that we're hiring, you know, this is a backhaul, you know, so they're loaded both ways, or they try to be, they want to be loaded both ways, where if we haul our own, we're going empty, you know, one direction, so.
Another question would be, I'm just curious as to, you know, we asked for a guaranteed price for a year on trucking, and I just don't know if there's a, it's the same as buying a truck or a piece of equipment, wanting a guaranteed buyback price. When you've got these trucks, they're bidding the price for 12 months from now with no way that they know what fuel's going to cost or anything like that. I'm just wondering if we would, might want to cut that back at some point in time and get a, go out, I know it takes time, but to go out bimonthly or something like that for costs.
Yeah. We could, I mean, if you wanted to in the future, you know, go with, you know, KATA has a price, a fuel price index, you know, so they've set a price for diesel at a certain point in time, and then, you know, your unit prices are adjusted, you know, monthly depending on, you know, whether price goes up or price goes down on that fuel. I mean, that's something that we could look at.
Okay. Right now, though, okay, that having been said, right now, with this Night Trucking and they're coming out of Ham, are those prices that we have, the haul price, how firm is that?
That's firm.
That's firm.
They're not going to vary those prices for an entire year? No. No.
One of, one of the issues we did have last year, you saw the 30% increase in our aggregates and hauling, was we got a really good deal on a backhaul last year for our aggregates. And so, the increase was probably actually only about 15% because we were getting a backhaul on our aggregate last year so cheap. So, if we, if they haul the amounts that we request, they can ask for, so, you know, we've hauled this, and then they could come back, and if we need more, say, renegotiate.
After they've hauled the bid quantities, the quantity that they bid.
And so, we couldn't get anybody else to haul to us last year because we didn't accept their bid at that price. So, they would not haul it for the price that they bid because they weren't.
Well, I can understand that.
Yeah. So, the contract amounts that they say they'll haul, when they get to that amount, then they can say, you know, we need an increase.
Any other questions, Justin or Darren? No, I'll bring it back. No. Questions or comments from the public. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for aggregate and aggregate hauling as recommended by staff.
Second to motion.
Then moved in second, we approve bid award for 2023 aggregate and aggregate hauling, 2022-54. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Health Department and Planning and Zoning Copiers with Brad Bowers, Information Technology Director.
Morning, Brad.
Morning. This request for action in front of you this morning is for the purchase of six copier multifunction devices from the Document 360 Solutions Company. Total cost of this request is $29,939.70. This is a Consolidated Printing of Salina originally won this bid back in May of earlier this year at a total cost of $21,964. But due to supply chain problems, they are unable to deliver the copiers. Now, I will add that late last week, prior to going on the Thanksgiving holiday and after this document was required to be input, Consolidated Printing committed to getting us three of the copiers that have not been able to be delivered because of supply chain issues this week based on the decision we make today. So, that was, I got that information too late to put into this document, but that was a phone call that I did receive last week. They are committing to getting us three of the five that requested that the original request was made under on May 24th based on the decision we make today. The original request back in May was for five copiers, and they will all be used at the Celine County Health Department. And in this case, one copier will be used in the Planning and Zoning Department. The new copiers will replace copiers that have been in use since 2014. Specifications for the new copiers were released, and we received price quotes from Consolidated Printing of Salina, Document 360 Solutions, and ImageQuest. The quote results have been edited and are as follows. You can see, the original Consolidated Printing bid was for $21,916.65 for five C250Is. That equates to a unit cost of $4,383.30. The edited portion of the Document 360 copier bid is for a C, is for a 2554CI, which would more than be enough. Originally, Document 360 quoted two copiers that were faster per page than what these 2554s are. These will suffice, that has been bid on the sheet. The total 360 cost for the Health Department only would be $24,949.75 if we were to agree to award this to Document 360. The Planning and Zoning total from 360 would be $4,989.95. And ImageQuest had a total cost of $35,444.04 for five Xerox C8145s. I also put in here from the original bid, the maintenance cost estimates, and as you can see, the total cost of ownership was based on 10,000 black and white copies and 10,000 color copies. You know, depending on the copier, you're probably not going to get 10,000 in a year. You may get, you may not get 10,000 in five years. But I just threw that out there for a comparison. Consolidated Printing with those numbers came in at $25,774 for the total cost of ownership over five years. Document 360, $32,789.70, and ImageQuest was a $37,044.04. Alternatives for action. You can approve the request as presented, have staff go back and research other options, and as a third alternative, you can direct us to wait until the C250 printer, copiers are delivered from Consolidated Printing. Eventually, the supply chain issue will resolve. I'm told, and I've been told since July, that these copiers are most likely on a boat parked in the Long Beach, waiting to be offloaded in Long Beach. Don't know if that's true or not, but that's what we're being told. But that is an alternative for action, is to direct us to wait. Our recommendation today is, we had originally recommended purchasing these copiers from Consolidated Printing for $21,916.64 with the maintenance costs included that I've already talked about. This decision was based on the copier cost and the five-year total cost of ownership for these copiers. However, staff is now recommending purchasing six Keocera 2554CI copiers from Document 360. The reason for the change in recommendation is because the C250I copiers from Consolidated are not available currently due to supply chain problems. Now, I've already mentioned the phone call that I got late last week about their commitment to getting us three. The six copiers from Document 360 Solutions are in stock and can be delivered immediately. Budget impact. Originally, $22,000 was budgeted in the technology improvement plan for this project. The total cost of this expenditure with the new recommendation would be $29,939.70. $2,0949.75 of the overage would be made up by the Health Department CIP fund, and $4,989.95 for the Planning and Zoning copier would be paid for out of IT budget funds that have been saved throughout the year. There should be enough in there to, enough savings from our projects that we should be able to pay for that copier. It's a very, this has been a very difficult thing, and I know you probably have a lot of questions, so.
Well, to me, it would have been helpful to have all of those numbers that you're coming off the top of your head with in this packet. I mean, I get the final ones are here, but not all the ones, the differences and so forth that you're talking about. I think buying three now and waiting for the other, unless you can wait for the other two to come in, is not a good idea. I mean, if we could get by with three now and unknown when we'd get the other two, if that's okay, then that would be the way I'd go. But I don't think that's going to happen. And I don't think it'd really be fair to this Document 360 or, yeah, that company to pull that on and then ask them to hold the price on the other two or three. I don't think that's good business, so.
If the decision was to go status quo today, the copiers that we're replacing are covered under a maintenance contract. The maintenance is done by Consolidated Printing, and, you know, they're going to stand by that. They're, they'll make sure that we've got the capability to maintain these copiers. Now, they're so old that their parts are hard to get for them. They are, but they will stand by, they will stand by their commitment to make them, to keep them functioning. They're, they are, but they will, they will stand by, they will stand by their commitment to make them, to keep them functioning.
Do you know how many copiers that Celine County has in all of their departments?
Um.
Roughly?
I, I, it, I don't know exactly, but I would, I would estimate that we have at least 20.
It seems to me like, I don't know, but I mean, if we could get one company to cover all of our copier needs, uh, it's kind of like our trucking, you know, it's, I think we need to look at that seriously rather than coming to us with every department to buy copiers. That's, that's the thought.
This is a, this, uh, field, um, copier printing is, is evolving. Um, there are companies out there that will charge a flat monthly fee for, for all of these things, provide the machines and, you know, the Sheriff's Office, uh, uh, they, they do their, their copier, um, their copier functions like that. They, they lease, they lease them and they, it's a one, it's a one monthly cost to them. And that's how they do it. So.
That was who, the sheriff?
Yes.
Well, the sheriff's of Celine County Department.
Sure. Yep.
I mean.
How time sensitive is this if we put it off this week?
Um, I, I don't think it's, I don't think there's any time sensitive. The, the only, the, the thing that I'm not sure of is, is what happens to the money that we have budgeted in TIP for this project, if it goes beyond the end of the year. That's, that's, that would be my question.
You mentioned that Consolidated Printing has said they will have three machines available. Was there a timeframe to win those three?
This week was what I was told.
This week?
This week, depending on this decision we make today. They could, they could deliver three of those copiers this week. They committed to that.
And is it, uh, a bad practice to mix and match, uh, machines and maintenance, uh, warnings and this and that, or? I mean, if we had three consolidated machines and, and, uh, two, three, from 360 is, is that an issue? Does that make for a headache?
That would not be an issue in my book.
Quick question here is, is that out of the five that we're replacing here is, and we get three new ones, is the two, any two of those five that would last another three, four, five months until we get the other two new ones from Consolidated? I mean, if, if they're under maintenance contract.
In, in my opinion, they would.
Yes.
They would last.
So to say.
The manufacturer, the Consolidated, I think, has made a commitment to make them, to make them work.
So to save the funds, I, I mean, I'm just thinking here out loud is that it's like, it would be uh, advantageous for the county to go ahead and purchase these from the Consolidated, save the eight thousand dollars and then get the three now and then wait for the other two.
That is certainly an option.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at that going, that's a, that's a kind of a.
And, and the original, the original bid was, it was in, was within the budgeted amount that was requested, so.
Did I hear you say, Roger, eight thousand dollar savings?
Yes.
Yeah.
Almost eight, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, twenty-one versus the, the thirty. Yeah, isn't it?
Yep, yep, little over eight.
Yeah, a little over eight.
You've been happy with Consolidated over the years?
Uh, yes, the Health Department, I think, has been, has been happy with their, with their maintenance and they've been very responsive to when there are problems and they do show up. The, the, the machines there, they're a, they're a sole, uh, the only machines that they provide are Conic Minolta.
Right.
And that's, that's what they're, that's what they have now and that's what they, the C two fifty Is are. They'll be Conic Minoltas.
Yep.
It seems.
Go ahead, go ahead.
My, my thought is, uh, and I'm thinking the same way you guys are, that the three of them we can get by with, uh, would be fine, but I think we need some sort of an assurance on the back end that when these other two are going to be around or what they're going to do to cover us on those other two. Uh, maintenance wise, loner, uh, a used one that they've got, whatever, whatever it takes to fulfill the obligation because we're going to need five, but, uh, I'm with you on saving the money in the, in the three.
Are these trade-in prices?
Yes, yes, they are. Yep. Both, both, both vendors would, would take the old machines. Yep.
I picked up on what Marty, uh, said, and that is, uh, time sensitive. If we were to put this off a week and let you do just a little bit more research with Consolidated and see what type of an assurance we can get on the other two, uh, and in some fashion, might be a wise thing to think about.
I also think it'll be helpful to the public to have a little bit more information instead of just what he's been saying. I, I just, also, I, I hate to buy things just because it's the end of the year. I mean, that's just an accounting thing. You can roll money over. I mean, if, if we need this, we need this, but we, that's just bad practice to pay, you know, buy things just because the money's available. Or going, supposedly going away.
I, I look at this eight thousand dollar, that's, that's the cost of two copiers from Consolidated. I think we need to, and I'm sure their prices are probably going to go up if they, if their bids were. Is this their bid today again? This twenty-one nine sixteen?
They're standing by it. You, you bet. Yes, sir. Consolidated, uh, Consolidated Printing is standing by the twenty-one nine sixteen fifty-four, and again, that was for five of them.
And if we put this off a week, is there any, I mean, of course, we wouldn't know this right off the bat either, but if we put this off a week, is there any chance that Consolidated's got somebody else to buy these and then that week they're gone?
Um, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's a danger, but I will tell you that I've been, that I've been checking on this availability since July.
Uh huh.
So the, the answer has been the same since July with, with the exception of what I, what I found out late Wednesday afternoon. So, um, you know, I can't sit here and tell you that Consolidated would have these, you know, copiers in January or February or, you know, December 20th. I, I don't, I just don't know the answer.
They wouldn't know either, yeah.
And I, you know, we, we had this, we had this project on the books and I, you know, I'm, I, the original copy bid came in, came in under budget or in the budget area and that's, that's, to me, that's kind of important as well, so.
I'm, I'm going to put some finality to this in, in my mind, and that is that we do put this off a week. We do give you time to go back to Consolidated and see what kind of an assurance they're going to give us, uh, for the additional two copiers.
Okay.
And, uh, or what they can do, uh, assuming we'll keep our two and make them last to whenever they can come up with. But assuming that they, those copiers give out, then what is, what are they going to do for us?
Okay.
And, and look for a, a finalization in that regard.
And, and I agree. I can't imagine a week makes a, a difference, but I think that it would help us make a decision, a, a better decision. And I'm okay if we end up buying three next week, but I just can't.
Right.
And that may, that maybe is the decision we'll come up with. I don't know, but.
Well, it comes back to the, uh, eight thousand dollars.
Yep.
I can certainly live with, with, uh, with waiting for sure. Yeah. It's a difficult thing. It really is.
And, and the three machines that would be replaced, they're, they're all identical, correct?
They are, yes.
So they could, consolid, they could hold on to those three used machines for parts or anything else until those other two do arrive. I mean, or trade them out. I mean.
It would help them maintain the other ones that they, that they still owe us.
Yeah, I. Bottom, bottom line is we want to know what, what, how they're going to cover us on the two that aren't coming yet. That's, that's what we want some sort of an, an assurance of.
Got it. Okay.
I know this has been, this has probably been a little bit more work than you're used to on this. And it's normally a very easy decision for us too, but it's just time.
This was, there was nothing pleasant about this, actually.
Yeah, I know.
It just.
If you don't mind.
No, I don't. I don't. I want to see the, uh, we want to get the best result, so, yep, I'll wait a week if that's your, your decision.
Should we put that in? Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, I think we need to have an action on that.
I'm assuming we just need to table it. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we table, um, the Health Department Planning and Zoning Copiers for 2022-55 for one week.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second. We, um, table the Health Department Planning and Zoning Copiers for one week. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? Pose same sign.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries three to two.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move into our informational items.
Commissioners comments?
Comments from any commissioners?
I'd just like to say that I attended by Zoom, um, a meeting with, um, the Ewing Kaufman Foundation, uh, based out of Washington DC. Um, there were six Kansas counties, um, that attended. It is, Ewing Kaufman's intent is he's created a, um, foundation that, um, would help fund counties, um, to explore ways to help entrepreneurs in their counties. Um, it was just a brainstorming session. Um, I'm assuming this is a long-term project. Uh, it was, it's interesting though, because obviously Ewing Kaufman family is from Kansas City and so this foundation is starting in the Midwest with, um, the kind of the brainstorming session. So it was very helpful. To hear what other counties are, are doing and, and really that, you know, we already have the Northwestern or North Central Regional Planning Center is, is kind of our go-to on that and, and do fund that. But, um, I think that they were looking for, uh, different, different ideas down the road, so I'll keep you informed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go to item number two.
Announcements?
Any announcements from the commission? Seeing none, we'll go into our concept discussion. Item number one.
Discussion of additional budget stabilization accounts.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission and county administrator Philip Smith Haynes. So, uh, you've had a couple of, uh, action items this morning that really highlighted a lot of the economic uncertainties that exist in the universe right now. Um, price increases, supply chain increases, and so, uh, in our, uh, department head and elected official meetings, we've been having conversations about, uh, starting the, the planning process for future budgets and one of the ideas that came up was we have a budget stabilization account in the, uh, general fund, which helps keep the mill levy fairly steady in, in the general fund and gives us some ability to deal with, uh, inflationary pressures should we need to tap into that. We do not have a similar, uh, account in some of our other operating funds. Roden Bridge, Noxious Weed, Health Department. Um, and so those departments are, um, smaller. Roden Bridge is pretty large, but compared to the general fund, those three funds are, are much smaller and uh, so subject to some of that fluctuation. And so the idea came up, well, what if we did a budget stabilization account in each one of the operating funds rather than just in the general fund? And so I thought I would, uh, bring that idea to the commissioners and get a little bit of feedback from you as we start looking at, um, the budget for next year coming up here in the spring. Uh, what that would mean, of course, is it would add an expenditure to each of those funds and drive up the, the mill levy in each of those funds for at least the first year. Of course, it's a expenditure line that you never actually hope to spend. It's there just for the, the purpose of, um, having it if needed. Um, but it would, uh, likely have some sort of a, of a mill levy impact, um, for those funds in, in the first year. So that is, the concept is, um, you know, whether we should, uh, try and do something along those lines to, um, help out with all, a lot of the uncertainties that exist in the economy at the present time. I think, I, I think this probably, um, Roden Bridge and, and Health Department have some, uh, ability to absorb some of those cost increases. I think probably the one fund where this would be, um, sort of the biggest impact would be in, uh, Noxious Weed, because Noxious Weed expenditures are driven in large part by chemical prices and chemical prices are a function of petroleum prices for the most part. Most of the, the, uh, herbicides are based, uh, petrochemical based. And so, um, relatively small variations, dollar-wise, big percentages, but small dollars, um, have some pretty, uh, significant impacts on the, on the Noxious Weed Fund, so. Um, that, it's also the fund that has the smallest mill levy to begin with, so it would have the least impact if you chose to do um, a budget stabilization account in that fund. But anyway, that's, uh, the idea and gauge commission feedback on that.
If I could, give me the history of kind of a stabilization fund with the general, in the general fund. How much do we do that and, and has, is it used all the time? I mean, what happens at the end of the year with the money? Blah, blah, blah.
Uh, it's 1.96 million. It has been that number, give or take a few thousand for several years. Uh, and it is not used, it has not been used, um, in, um, many years. It, I think, um, you know, if we had a catastrophic event, a major flood or, or something like that, we would use it, but, um, but we have not used it in many years. What typically happens to it is it becomes carryover cash at the end of the year and that's part of what, uh, the commission typically authorizes the, uh, the auditor to transfer to CIP at the end of the year.
So in a perfect world, we would fund this next year and then hopefully it would just roll over instead of, I mean, in a perfect world.
But, yeah.
But, I mean, it's still there to be used. So if something happens with the Noxious Weed program now or the Roden Bridge program, can, can they access the general fund stabilization? Is, is that, how have we done that?
Uh, so, um, that would require essentially budget rep publication.
Yeah.
Because you're talking about transferring money between funds. Uh, it's not that it couldn't be done, but it would be a fairly big undertaking.
Yeah, it's just not like writing a check from a different account. Yeah, okay. Helpful. Thank you.
Quick question on that. It's like all the departments that do end up with funds at the end of the year and they transfer, those funds get transferred to the general fund? I mean, let's say Roden Bridge, Sheriff's Office, uh, other departments that they end up at the end of the year and they have funds that are left over. Do that, does those funds get transferred to the general fund most generally?
So you used two wildly different examples in your question.
Gotcha.
So you used Roden Bridge and you used Sheriff's Office. And the answer to Roden Bridge is no, and the answer to Sheriff's Office is yes. And the reason is because Roden Bridge is in a separate fund and a fund is a self-balancing account. And so they can only spend out of their fund. The Sheriff's Office, the Clerk's Office, the Commissioners, many, the Appraiser's Office, uh, you know, IT are all within the general fund. So they have budgets, but from a legal standpoint, the only budget that matters is at the fund level. So as long as the general fund balances at the end of the year, then individual departments within the general fund, um, can either pull money from or contribute money back to the fund balance at the end of the year. Noxious Weed, Health Department, Roden Bridge are different than that because they're in their own fund. Uh, the other.
Thank you.
The other one, uh, The other, the other one is Employee Benefits is also in its own fund, but we don't tend to think of that as a department in the sense of an operating department.
Gotcha. Now, do the rural fire districts, which, do they fit under which one of those?
So each of the rural fire districts has its own fund. They are, I'm going to say, one level further removed, right? Because they are actually legally separate governments, even though you all are the governing body of each of them, they are legally separate governments. So you cannot, back to Commissioner Shadwick's earlier question, you could not transfer funds from Fire District Three to Fire District Two. That would be a violation of law because they are legally separate governments, they have taxed different set of taxpayers to raise their mill levies, which is different than between the general fund and Roden Bridge. They have a common set of taxpayers.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in one of the Noxious Weed reports that he mentioned that the pricing that they can sell is set by the state. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the state Noxious Weed law provides that counties must sell chemical to landowners at a discounted rate. So we buy it, and then we essentially sell it at 75 cents on the dollar. So, and the purpose of that, right, is that we want people to abate Noxious Weeds, and we want people to use their own labor to abate Noxious Weeds because it minimizes the staffing that we need and et cetera. And so it makes sense in the big picture, right? But at the level of budgeting, it's difficult because, yeah, you're taking a loss on every, every pound or gallon of chemical that you sell.
Maybe, I mean, that's a mandated issue from the state. Maybe, maybe that'd be something to take to our state legislators. Maybe, maybe they could pony up some cash to help offset that 25%. I don't know. I'm just thinking that we're taking the brunt of it, and I understand the logic behind it, but...
Yeah, I think you would get 104 other boards of commissioners to support that idea. I don't know how much traction we'd get in the legislature, but yeah, I mean, I think that's a, you know, it's a reasonable request for...
Is our auditor on board with this concept, Randy Hofmeyer? And is he recommending it? Where'd this concept come from?
The concept came from the departments. This is a discussion that we had. I have not run it by Randy specifically, but I will say Randy generally supports having funds available in each of our, resources available in each of our funds. He hates to give us a budget violation, so, but, I mean, I could certainly have further conversation with him, and I would if this is something the commission was interested in exploring.
Well, it seems to make sense that, for lack of a better term, that everybody has a savings account, you know, set aside, so you can call it whatever you want to, but that's kind of what you're talking about. And is there a percentage that people use out there? I mean, is the 1.9 million in the general fund, what percentage is that? And, I mean, is there something out there that other counties use, that it's 5%, 10%, blah, blah, blahs, you know?
Yeah, the 1.9 million was originally set as a percentage, and I, this gave me what percentage it was specifically, it was seven and a half or something. But, yeah, I mean, typically you would, I mean, you wouldn't come up with 1.9 million in Noxious Weed.
It would be a percentage of whatever.
It would be a percentage of what they typically...
So seven, yeah, 7%.
Something along those lines.
And the only way those funds could be generated is through a separate identified mill levy. You can't, when we go into next year's budget, we can't scale back, have that, put that in place, and then scale back from other expenditures in other departments and apply it towards that. Does that make any sense?
It does, it does make sense, and I will say the answer is both yes and no. So when you're in budget development, you could, sort of, what matters to people at the end of the year, right, is the total mill levy, right? I don't think any taxpayer really cares whether the general fund is 17 or 18 mills. They care that the whole county is 39, right? And so you could, in budget development, if you're increasing the mill levy for, say, the Noxious Weed Fund, you could find an expenditure in the general fund to reduce that would drive down the mill levy for the general fund and try and balance the entire mill levy for the county in that way. That's slightly different than the, where you were going with the question, which was transferring it between departments.
No, but that answers my question.
Yeah, it's the same effect.
The logistics of it.
Yes.
I'm not a real big fan of raising the mill levy at all, but if there's a way that we can do it through the budget process, even if it starts on a smaller level scale than what you want your end results to be, just plant the seed now. That's me personally.
But you like the general concept of the savings account.
Yeah, oh, I do, I do. We all do that for our own household budgets and...
And businesses.
Businesses, yeah, so, that's just me personally.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that conversation, and I think that gives me a direction to head in.
All right, I guess no more discussion on that. We'll move to item number two.
Future road improvement projects.
Welcome back.
So I'm here this morning to talk about our future road improvement projects utilizing our 124 account. Our 124 account is our one-mill road improvement, or road upgrade account. So in your packet, hopefully you should have 11 by 17 of what's shown up here on the projector. And so what I've done is I've gone through, and this is a chart that you've seen for the last couple of years. And so I've updated our 2022 year, and so this first page will give you, you know, the summary of the 2020, 2021, and 2022 projects that we've utilized this account for. If you go to the second page for me, so this is as we're moving forward. So, you know, the top part of this table is 2023, all the way down to 2026. And so really, what I want to focus on is really the next three years. So that's 23, 24, and 25. And what I've done is I've got three projects up there that's highlighted in green. These are new projects that Roden Bridge would like to complete, and they haven't been presented to you yet, and so I would like to, I've got a lot of pictures that we can kind of flip through pretty quick to kind of show you what the issue is. So, but we'll just start with our 2023 projects, and so we still have a couple of projects that will be completed through our Section 428 FEMA projects. And so that's the Gypson Valley gravel to asphalt upgrade, as well as the Kingman Road right there in the northeast corner of Gypson, and so that's a gravel to asphalt upgrade as well. Those have been kind of in the works, well, since 2019. And then we've got a Simpson Road upgrade from McReynolds to K4, and that'll be by County Maintenance Division. And then also in the 2023, we've got the Centennial Road. So that's that $200,000 payment to the city for Centennial Road for half a mile north of Waterwell. So, but we're still just waiting for them to take that road into the city limits. And so that hasn't happened yet. Again, I would assume it would happen last year, but it didn't, so I carried that over to 2023. But here I want to start with another presentation over the, it's the Streets in Mentor and Bavaria. So if you can switch over to the next, next slide, the number two. Can, can you zoom in on that very top? Because the picture sizes are quite a bit different, and so that's why it's doing that. Or do it fit view on that one? It won't do that? Hmm, okay, we'll have to talk about that in the future. So, so this is the first project in the community of Mentor. So the Roden Bridge Department maintains these roads. And so what I've got here is in the orange line, which is the, starting at the intersection of Mentor and Grand, go up to, go north to the intersection of Grand and Chester, west a block, and then back down on Washington Street, back to Mentor. So currently, these roads are a chip-sealed roads. They've just been chip-sealed for year after year after year. And what we'd like to do is hire a contractor to grind up the existing asphalt material and kind of blend it in or mix it in with whatever bases underneath it there. The Roden Bridge Department then would go in and shape and recompact the road, and then add gravel on top of it. And since, from our opinion, we're upgrading that from a very poor asphalt road to a good gravel road. So go to the next...
Justin, can I ask you just a quick question here? And I'll just ask this, with that being a poor asphalt road now, you don't have the dust issues in that circle that you do if we go to gravel?
Correct.
So...
Correct. And therefore, yeah, we'd have to be very selective on the rock material that we would put in there, and that's where, you know, we would use, you know, that, some of that harder material, you know, the one from Melvorn Quarry, the Nightland, would be a good material to put in, in some place like this, so... Yes.
Wouldn't homeowners be better served with a poor asphalt road versus a gravel road?
So, I mean, that's, that's really, it's, of course, the landowners are going to want to have an asphalt road. I mean, because, yeah, you're taking away something that they have, in their opinion, it's going to, we're going to be downgrading. But for these roads that's out here, though, it's, they're beyond gone. You know, it's a, it's a challenge trying to keep these roads where they don't have just huge potholes, and we're going there every year patching and just trying to glue it back together for, for a while. And so, and that's really a decision, that's kind of why I want to bring this up to you guys, if you want us to proceed with this. Because if you don't, then I will, we'll take it off the table, and we'll continue patching and chipsealing what we can, but it's, it is always going to be a very poor asphalt road.
And just a quick question here, is that how, what is the length of this? If it's like, those three streets right there that you're looking at, is that a quarter of a mile or 200 yards?
Oh, no, it's...
Huh?
500 feet, probably 1,500 feet.
Yeah, I would, I would say it's at least, you know, a third, it probably, you know, because you're going maybe a long block, you know, north, you know, short block east-west, and a long, so it's, you're looking at a third of a mile.
Okay, and then just quick, do, and the county, do we have the equipment to go in and just maybe do this, right? Kind of just take this and go in and fix those potholes, then have AIPAC and just what the cost would be to come in and asphalt it? Inch and a half or two inches?
One of the reasons that we wanted to is there is no asphalt there. We don't have the equipment to grind it up ourselves, so that's why we would hire a contractor to grind it. And again, this was why we brought this to the commission, because it is deep paving. And, and so that's why we wanted to bring it forward to the commission.
Yeah, and the issues I'm going to show you in these pictures, you know, is, there's no drainage. I mean, there's the, there's no way to get the water away from the asphalt. You know, some places, there's, there's some ditches that are pretty flat. Other places, there's no ditches at all, you know, and they've got fences real close, and there's just no way of getting the water, which is, you know, a pavement killer, getting away from that. So to spend, you know, the money on, on, you know, new asphalt, it's immediately going to start deteriorating because you can't get the water away.
But then we, then we go, and I'm just asking this question, because over here on that Gypson Valley road over there, I mean, or that, that road right on the east side of Gypson, I mean, where, that's why we're putting in asphalt, is because when it does flood, it's not going to tear away the road. So that's a difference than water just standing versus water rushing over it?
Correct, right. Because once the water goes down, the asphalt and the base will be out of the water. Where here, the water's just going to set.
What's the property on the right there?
That's the fire station.
Okay.
Do any of these streets...
Doesn't look like a lot of taxpayers on that road.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's where, that's what my question is going to be. Are any three of those streets, through streets for traffic to go through this community and going out into the county? Are these all just streets within that community?
These are all, yeah, just local streets within that kind of community. If you go back to the, maybe the first... You know, so you see, it's the, the road, so each north-south road, you know, they, they extend past Chester Street, you know, and those are gravel. That's a gravel, and then it just ends up there. So none of these are through streets.
What appears to me that two of the three, there are no, well, there's maybe one house on the one corner there. Now, over on the, is that Washington Street? Is that what that is?
Washington Street is the west road there, the north-southwest.
Okay, there are, looks like, what, two or three houses there?
There, on the corner there is, is actually a, was it a post office? And I was actually talking to a lady who purchased that property, and they're in the process of tearing it down.
But the other two blocks don't have any houses on them at all, really?
Yeah, the Chester Street has a few homes on it.
Yep, where, where at? I mean, I see one, one home there.
That one there, and there's one right there, right there's the other one.
Oh, all the way up to two?
Yeah.
Well, obviously, asphalt-ing road is silly. That would just open up a whole can of worms all over the county. There's just not enough taxpayers there to cover that cost.
I'll just ask that question.
So, no, yeah, that's, that's kind of why we're here, you know, we don't want to, you know, put any effort into proceeding with this project, and, you know, if, if we don't have the support of the commission.
And the other question that I could address about the dust, with the speeds being low, you know, and, and the proper aggregates, I don't see it that much of an issue with it.
And the speed limit is not 55 and even 40, I mean, you know...
Right, right, you're going to have very low-speed vehicles there.
Right, so go to the, go to the next one, if you could, Lauren. So here, we're still on Grand, Grand Road is what it's called, and so you just, again, a picture of the condition of the asphalt. And I even know if I'd call it asphalt, because like it says, it's chip-sealed. It's not an asphalt pavement, it's a, it's a chip-sealed road. It's a, you know, so I'm not even sure what kind of a base, there's probably not much of anything underneath it there. And so you can see here, it's kind of falling apart, and a lot of the, the asphalt looks very gravel-like, or the pavement looks very gravel-like anyway, in a lot of condition where it's just breaking down. Go ahead and go to the next one. So here is at the intersection of Grand and Chester. I'm looking north to the gravel section, you know, so that's kind of what we're, we're looking at, you know, really creating, you know, is, is, is a road that we can maintain. We can go in there with a blade and smooth it up when it, when it needs to. So go to the next one. So here's turn the corner, we're looking west, down Chester Street, you know, on the right side there, there's absolutely, you know, no ditches through there. There's, there's a really small ditch on the left side, but the no ditches is a real issue for, for any kind of road. Go to the next one, please. Here's a little close-up picture, Chester Street, and just we see the map cracking, you know, pretty much all the way throughout with... you know, pretty much all the way throughout with the edges already still looking kind of gravel like a gravel road.
Are we getting complaints from the homeowners down there about this condition of these streets?
The conditions of the streets as they are now?
Right.
I don't. Have you received any?
From time to time, yes.
Because I'm sure.
And their complaint is?
They get holes.
Large potholes.
Gets large potholes. And the only way to repair that is is, you know, to go down there, put some AB3 in there. And then as it rains and the water settles, and they just they just come back. So when we say not just take this out, this would be a project to restore the ditches and elevate the road a little to alleviate those those issues also.
Darren, this would be real similar what you did at Sundowner.
Absolutely, same thing.
And then that that worked out very, very well for the homeowners.
Yeah, once that chip seals all, you know, incorporated and then.
And 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 the ditch and and the drainage out there, from what I understand, is a lot better. So. That makes sense.
Well, and what I'm driving at is is I'm thinking, man, this sounds like a lot of money. But then when I look down here at the number, is this $25,000?
You know, that's that right now, I'm, you know, that's that's a shooting from the hip estimate. You know, because the, you know, you're looking at the cost of getting a contractor in to reclaim it. They'll bring in a reclamer and a water truck and just mill through what you're looking at, you know, two days, maybe here. And then I will show you, take a look at Bavaria, you know, another day or two there. And then it's really just our time, you know, shaping and milling or shaping it and compacting it. And then just whatever gravel we put on top. So.
So the $25,000 is for both projects, Minter and Bavaria?
Yeah, yeah. And again, that's just kind of a shoot a shot in the dark. We're not talking a lot of money because we're not talking very, very long distances.
Yeah, I I just think those, I mean, they deserve a better street than that. I mean, I get that.
You know, and if if this is something you want to move forward with, you know, we'll we'll get some quotes first from contractors to to get in there and mill it and kind of see what that cost is. And then we can we can then I can get a better cost for what it the total cost of the project will be.
Well, the $25,000 doesn't scare me, but 50,000 or 100,000 does, you know, so without a.
Right, right.
What kind of I struggle with is calling this like.
Excuse me, I'll turn my mic on. I struggle with the thought that this is a road improvement. I I don't say, you know, I could be for it, but I don't know why that didn't come out of our general maintenance budget and why it comes out of the 124. To me, in my mind, 124 was set up when you take a road from this and make it the next step higher. Here, we're taking it back and it's $25,000. It could come out of either one of them and not impact the budgets that much.
Oh, absolutely.
I just hate to say to the president that that we're using 124 funds in that manner.
Yeah, I guess I I look at it as why I put it in here is, you know, an improvement is probably all based off your perspective. You know, if you're living there, that's may, you know, probably not an improvement. From our perspective, it's it's going to be an improvement because it's a road that doesn't pothole. It's a road that we can maintain, shake, get the water where we need to. But I absolutely see your point.
You're right. It is just a perspective because I think everybody out at Sundowner feels that that was an improvement.
And and part of the the other issue is too, is because when you talk about deep paving road, it really needs to be brought before the commissioners. And in that regard, this is what we were trying to accomplish here.
Yeah.
So.
Where the money comes from is a later discussion is what we're talking about.
Yes. And here, do we have to go in and actually put in new culverts and stuff when you redo your ditches and stuff? Okay, that's what. So it will be a new type of. Cool. Where in that town, where does the water go to? If let's say you do do the ditches, where does the water go to? It doesn't go anywhere.
Doesn't go anywhere.
You just need deeper ditches.
What we can, because, you know, again, in a community like this, utilities are.
Yep.
That's where it's at. Utilities are a problem. And so, you know, the first thing we'll have to do is, you know, like utility locate. And then, you know, and so again, this is where, you know, a lot of these these issues like utilities can start increasing the costs. Is the only way we know what we can do as far as ditches, we've had to find the utilities. So we got to hire a contractor with a hydro vac trailer to actually find the utility depths. And there and that'll tell us what we can do for ditches.
Let me split hairs just a little further even. You've got this, you've you stated a while ago, these aren't asphalt roads, but you've got it listed here as an asphalt road. I mean, and that's that's where I'm, you know, I'm thinking like Jim does in a way. I mean, asphalt to gravel, that's not an upgrade, but this is an asphalt in the first place.
Perception is is an asphalt.
Well, that's.
The people who live out there, it's, you know, it's it's an asphalt. But I mean, it's but, you know, you're you're right. It's it's not an asphalt. I've how this table is set up, I put in a, you know, the the upgrade type and it it automatically does a puts drops that in. And so, you know, I don't have a a chip seal to gravel, but I can add that in there. But it's but right now, it's it's just more of kind of what are your thoughts? Is this something you want us to proceed with or not? It's kind of where I'm at.
What am I way of thinking? I proceed, but I want I want to see some actual more or more realistic costs of what this is going to be.
Yeah, but they, yeah, but they can't do that until we kind of just conceptually say we're okay with this.
Conceptually, yeah.
And I and then and then we we keep putting thoughts into the residents' minds. They don't even, I mean, at some point, if this becomes a a plan, they're going to be able to come to us and at a meeting and say no or yes or whatever.
Right, yeah.
Right, right now, they have, I mean, we're not even at the stage where you've contacted anybody.
Correct, correct, yeah.
I think it's a good concept and appreciate you guys bringing these before the board. I can remember quite a few years ago, three and a quarter miles of State Lake Road, which was asphalt, went back to gravel and commissioners got tarred and feathered over that. But it didn't serve any purpose, no residents per se. And I I just hope the contractor does a good milling job to reclaim this. Because that was lacking out on this three and a quarter miles of State Lake Road.
Yeah. Yep. So, okay. Well, let's just kind of plow through the rest of these pictures. Go to the next one here. That's just some more map cracking on where we're still Chester. Go to the next one. So here's we're on Chester looking at Washington Street. You can see, you know, more of that, you know, the chip seal material looks like a gravel road in a lot of sections. No ditches on the on the right side. Go to the next one. So here we're looking north now along Washington Street. So that's the the west, western north, south road there and looking at the gravel gravel section there. And then you could see how how much the pavement's cracked up. Go to the next one, which should be turned around and looking south, you know, at the condition of the asphalt. Go to the next one. You know, so here we got, you know, more map cracking. You know, there's a lot of patches on the on this section where you see the the bins, the grain bins there. So it gets a little higher traffic through there. So we probably have, you know, more patches in this section. Go to the next one, please. You know, here you can kind of see the, you know, the patch on the on top of patch, on top of patch. You know, not much drainage on the the right side of that picture and really not a whole lot we can do because the bins are right there. You know, and so that where it gets kind of tricky, tricky as well. So go to the next one. I think this is the last one for Minter. And so this is right where Washington Street connects to Minter Road, you know, and the whole intersection there is kind of all broken up. You know, getting a lot of of truck traffic through there. So and with no, and there's no base through there. So that's that's kind of why that is. So, okay, can we move on to the Bavaria pictures?
This is a road south to the church. Is that gravel?
In.
Minter?
Yes.
That last picture you showed us.
But we don't, we don't maintain that. That is a private.
Okay, thank you.
So here's Bavaria. It's kind of the same situation where we have what I've got in the brown lines, brown or orange, whatever you want to call them. Those are the chip sealed roads in town. All the other roads in that community is already gravel. So we would be doing the same thing. We'd have a contractor go in there and grind that up and mix it incorporated with the base. The county will go in there, recompact and and shape it and then add aggregates to that. So go to the next slide. This is the picture just on Magnolia, looking at the railroad tracks. Magnolia is the on that orange line there, that is the east, west, east, west running road. So go to the next one, please. You know, so here you're looking at, you know, just some some failure on on the the pavement there. You can see a lot of map cracking, a lot where the the pavement's actually depressed, you know, where there's kind of a a bowl where water kind of sits because the the structural integrity of that pavement has been compromised. Next. Here's still looking, going down Magnolia, looking east. And so here's again, we've got no ditches on the right side or the south side of the road and just small ditches on the the left side. But you see the tree rows there. So it's kind of it's number one, you know, the trees limit you what you can put in there for a ditch without taking the trees out. And two, with trees that right right there that close, you've got all them roots going underneath the road there. And that's where we've we've got several roads where we got issues with, especially those dry years. Well, we have been, those roots suck all the moisture out of the base material, which a lot of that's kind of clay material. That that soil, the clay soil shrinks and then cracks the asphalt. And so that's that's definitely an issue that we have through here. Go to the next, next picture, please. So more block cracking. And then here we're tying into Midland Road, which is a gravel road. Go to the next picture. So here's just going down Main Street. So keep going. Go to the next, next slide. So just some of the deterioration. Next slide. It's all kind of the same. So we'll kind of go through this pretty quick. Keep, you know, go to the next one there. We're still on Main Street. Is that it? Okay. So that's that's Main Street. And so what I'm going to do, just because of of trying to get through time, because I'm really not looking for answers right now, I want to get through the other two projects that I'm would like to present to you guys to consider for improvement projects. So let's go to the next, next one. And that is upgrading Ohio Street from Minter Road to Waterwell Road. So it's a two mile section through there. And what we would like to do is we would like to raise the elevation of that road, you know, 12 to 18 inches and then cap it off with gravel. So it's really a gravel road upgrade to a better gravel road. Some of the the tricky parts of this project is the flood control dam, you know, that parallels the the west side of that road. And that's going to make it very, very trick. There's really not much. Really, there's no drainage to go from that north side, or sorry, the west side of the road to the east side of the road. Water just kind of sets in it. There's not a lot of water in a lot of that area there, but it's it's still an issue. So. You know, so here, this is at the intersection with Minter Road, you know. So here you got to look at the the top, the dike on the left. On the right side, we've got about a quarter mile of houses, not much for ditches throughout this whole project, you know, and it's super flat. You know, all of this drainage from Minter's got to go a mile and three quarters to the north with almost zero grade before it has relief to get off of the right of way. And so that's we we do have some flooding through there because of of that issue. So let's go ahead and go to the next one here. Here again, there's just a sign with impassable during high water. Go to the next one. Here just kind of shows it's kind of hard to see that blue line is just the top of the dike and how close it is to the road. Go to the next next slide. Again, we've got the trees right there. So without buying right of way, we don't have really the ability to, you know, take those those trees out and make a bigger ditch. And and so we've got the the dike on one side and a lot of trees and houses and stuff on the other side. We don't have the, a lot of the cost of this project is going to be hauling in dirt. You know, because if we want to raise the road up, we can't get it from the site. It's going to have to be hauled in. And that's where this project gets a little on the expensive side for for what it is. So go to the next slide. Here's just where we show Minter Road. Go to the next slide. Again, it's it's here. I was just talking about, you know, we've got, you know, traffic volumes in excess of 400, you know, 400 to 500 vehicles a day. And so with that kind of traffic, you know, we we do put that rock down. But the traffic, you know, does just crush it. And without, when it's crushed, then it just blows away, you know. And so that's how, you know, roads like this, the elevation just starts dropping. And so we're just wanting to kind of bring this road back up to kind of where where it was, estimating kind of about where it was. So go to the the next slide, please. So here is where the the flood control dike on the west side of the road, it does cross Ohio Street and and extend on to the east. And so what I've been told is there's an entrance right there that I'm pointing out. And you see that the Ohio Street used to be at that elevation of that entrance. You know, and so it's it used to be a foot and a foot and a half taller, higher than what it is now. So. On the next slide, here's just the dike as it's going east and the drainage ditch that has to take all that water from a mile and three quarters to the south. Next page. And then here's where we're tying into Waterwell. So go to the next, next slide. Okay, so what what I did is with this project here, I went back seven years to look at what the cost to maintain this road has been. And I took all those costs and divided it by the seven years. And we're spending about $22,000 a year on this road if you annualize all of those costs. So $22,000 a year, we're estimating again, because we have, and it's not a real tight, tight estimate. It's going to be about a $700,000 project, mainly because we got to bring, we got to haul all that material in. And then so if you take that $22,000 and then, you know, add an inflation, you know, an a an inflation to that each year, what the math shows is that if we spend $700,000, it will, in a sense, pay itself off in about 20 years. So if that that makes sense. You know, comparing the maintenance costs that we're putting into it now, plus an inflation of of 4%, which is pretty low, it's going to be about a 20 year payoff to get to that $700,000. If that's what the project is, but that's that's where I'm at right now. That's assuming no maintenance on that road for 20 years.
20 years, yeah.
True, so.
There's going to be maintenance every year on that road. So that's.
So there's going to be maintenance, but also I think that 4%, I mean, we're seeing 30% now.
I'm surprised at the traffic count. That's that's impressive. I mean, that's a lot.
Well, and that's the thing that's driving my approval is nearly 500 cars a day. I mean, I I travel, I don't necessarily go on south there, but there's always cars, you know, going down Ohio Street, south of Waterwell.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of cars, 500 a day or nearly.
Many are using that to get on out to southeast to Celine School, too. And and it is true, it does flood and it is for vehicles, emergency vehicles and everything to get through there. It takes a pretty good flood for for that to be there. But when it happens, it's a real. And I think this project has been on our radar for a while, or at least it's been kicked around and talked about. But is does that price include, are we having to purchase product dirt or is that just the hauling?
No, that's that's for hiring a contractor. And this is all contract labor. So this was getting a contractor to go in there to do whatever grading we can. I mean, we got, if we were to move forward with it, we'd have to survey and see and make as much drainage improvements as we can. And then that would, and then the contractor would would bring in that dirt, blade it, add the surfacing, the the whole thing. So this would be a, the $700,000 is for a contract project.
And again, just being one of five, I mean, why not proceed on something like this? I mean, we can always say no later if it gets to be crazy, but.
But my hopes is I don't want to spend my resources, which is time, you know, until I get some, some like, yeah, this is could be a good project.
Would there be some crossover culverts?
Yes.
Tying east and west, hoping that it.
As much as we can, yeah.
Are your best, are your best buddies with the core engineer because they're going to play a big part on.
I've I've got a relationship with the core.
Alrighty.
You know, and of course, yeah, with that dike being right there, I I understand. I'll probably try to push the limits as much as I can, you know, until they say, nope, no more. You know, doing any kind of grading on the west side of the road. But that would, they would definitely need to be up to speed and 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 part of this project.
I too am one of five, but I I think this is a project worth pursuing.
Okay. So I've got this in the 2024 year. I mean, again, because when we have a special for a contract, it just takes time to get surveyed and get everything ready to go on that. So we will, we will proceed with that. So the last, if you go to the the next one. ready to go on that. So we will, we will proceed with that. So, um, the last, if you go to the, the next one. So this is another project that has not been on the list. And so I would like to, to bring up, and this is Simpson Road from Campbell, south to Shipple. Um, it's about a quarter mile, sorry, about a half a mile of road. Um, and so what this, this, um, so here's an area, we'll kind of give you a location where it's at with respect to Salina. Um, so right in that area there, so it's, um, going north of the Celine River, uh, there's a big ditch on the west side of the road. Um, and so from Shipple, south to the river, which is where kind of that, pink, magenta maybe, um, to some of you, is, that's where there's already a, a pretty substantial ditch there. We would want to still evaluate that ditch for this project. Um, but really what I'm thinking of as far as a construction project, it's going to be that brown or orange half a mile on the north there from Shipple up to Campbell. So go to the next slide, please. Here's just zoomed in a little bit more. Um, you know, so again, I'm looking at Shipple to Campbell with south there being evaluated. Go to the next slide, please.
Well, we have dug out all those ditches there in the last year, haven't we? I mean, they're pretty.
Not in this, not in this section. So go to the, go to the next slide, please. I'm going to try to plow through this pretty quick. Go to the next slide. And so we're, we're looking at about, um, was it eight hundred and eighty, uh, acres of drainage? So a little over, little over a, a section. So this is sec, uh, Simpson Road looking north. So this is, this is the, the north end of the project, but this is looking north. Um, this would not be incorporated. So then I'm going to turn around on the next slide. So this is where we had that, there was a timber, uh, entrance structure there that burned down a couple of years ago. Um, uh, maybe last year, early last year. Uh, but we, we kind of did some work into it. This is where the project's going to start. And this is the, the problem is all of that drainage that's coming from the right-hand side of this picture. It's coming around that corner and heading down, um, down the side of the road. Next picture, please.
Just, just for a second, Shipple is north of Campbell?
South.
South of Campbell.
South of Campbell. So here's, um, and this is, there's a box structure right there that, uh, adds some of the, the drainage from the northeast corner of that intersection. It takes and dumps it in this ditch as well. So next slide. Uh, so here that blue line is kind of where the center line of the, the ditch. Um, and what you can't see over there, there's a berm on the other side of those trees. And so what that does is, is it does, when you, we get a flood, that berm, the top of that berm is higher than the elevation of the road. And so it just, it forces the water out to the road. Uh, next slide, please. So here's where we, there is a, uh, concrete block structure there, but you can kind of see what the ditch is. There's not much of a ditch here. It's what we call a V ditch. Uh, there's not much capacity with a lot of trees. That slows the water down, which also reduces capacity. Next slide, please. So what I would like to do is kind of that, that green line is kind of a section, typical section. Um, you know, really not do much with the elevation of the road, but take that ditch and make it a wide, flat bottom ditch. Um, and then still with, uh, the berm on, on the backside to there, but give that ditch a lot, a lot more capacity. Go to the next slide, please. And here's kind of at, at Shipple looking north. Uh, once you get past the trees, we still have a ditch with not a lot of capacity there. Um, so and the green line is still kind of that typical section, four slope off of the ditch, flat bottom ditch, and then a berm on the backside. So then go to the next slide. Here's a Shipple. Here's a structure that needs to be replaced anyway. Um, during our investigation, we found that the piles are, are bad. Um, and so we need to get this structure replaced, um, as well. So it would just be part of the, the project. Go to the next slide, please. So here's what that structure kind of looks like. Next slide, please. Here's that timber pile. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So here is looking Shipple, going looking south. And so here's what I'm talking about. It's already been that graded, nice flat bottom ditch, uh, berm on the backside. So this is what I want to look to the north, um, in order to have that. So next slide, please. Go through. So that's kind of what it looks like and that's kind of what I want to do. Keep going. Keep going. We'll keep going. Go to the next one. So here's just more pictures looking south. And here's at the river bridge where that, that ditch kind of dumps into the saline. Go to the next, next picture, please. Uh, can you zoom in on those last two? So this is what, um, some flood damage that, uh, what the road looked like in twenty-twenty-one. Um, so it, I, we could have spent some more time trying to find what it looked like in twenty-nineteen. It was a mess. Um, so this is kind of where the water's already receded. Go to the next, next picture. And here's again, another picture of the road we've got to keep fixing. So now go to the bottom there. So here what I did, I kind of did the same thing. Um, I took all the maintenance, um, for the last seven years and annualized it. Took a, an estimate for what the grading project is going to do. That does not include the bridge, because that's kind of separate. Um, and it looked like the, the break even point's going to be in that, that fourteen to sixteen years for the, the cost, um, of this project, so.
Justin, I noticed that you don't have a traffic count on that particular road, but being familiar with it, I, I would venture to say it's, it's in that five hundred range, if not even higher.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have a good feel. I don't know if you have a good feel.
That's a, that's a pretty, that's a pretty highly used road there. Lots of traffic.
Yeah, so this is, this is a project I think is, is a, a, a good project to do. I put it off till the, the twenty-twenty-five just because I think it's going to, there's more design, there's more evaluation. There's, you know, we're going to have to buy right of way. Um, and the, the landowner up there is, um, willing to work with us. I don't really know exactly what that means yet, um, but if we're going to move forward with, we'll find out what, work with us on that. Because he would, he would like to get some improvements, um, there as well. So. That's in a sense, a nutshell. Like I said, I'm, I'm not looking for any answers, but that's, that's kind of what I'm, um, I'm looking at. And, uh, you know, maybe in a, uh, a month or so I can come back and we can kind of talk about, um, really what, all the other projects within the next three years. So, thank you.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Okay. I think that takes us to the end of our agenda, so. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
Second.
The move second, if we adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. We're adjourned.